All right. Good evening, citizens and city council. I'll call the April sixteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the West Richardson City Council to order at six P M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie if she will read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
All right. Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Bed Fado.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
Ben Stoker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink requested to be excused.
Counsel, do I have a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Brink this evening?
I move to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Councilmember Stoker, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, councilmember. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Do you have any changes to the agenda? Hearing done. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And this evening, we have a presentation from Visit Tri Cities with Kevin Lewis. He's going to give us the annual update. Kevin, thank you for taking time out of your evening to come visit with us. We appreciate seeing you here and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor. It's great to be with you and councilmembers. It's always good to see you guys. I don't see enough of you, I think, sometimes. So we get going so fast in our business. But good things going on and it's fun to come back and just sort of give a summary of what's been going on in the year. And so this is the annual report. We'll just kind of click through the slides here. The next one, I think it's always a good idea. I know most of us familiar with this, but I think it's always a good idea to just kind of refresh on what Visit Tri Cities is all about. We're a five oh one C six organization that's funded by lodging tax. We get a percentage of the lodging tax. We get some money from tourism performance agreements that we have with the three cities. The Kennewich, Richland and Pasco, and then we also have partners and members and sponsors that provide some of the money and you'll see kind of the breakout of that. But I think one of the things that if you go to the next slide, one of the things that's really important to just understand is what our vision, what we're here for. I think we're really about community vitality. Our real purpose is to help the communities in our area achieve their goals and we do that through tourism and by creating a dynamic economy through tourism. And so our vision, we updated that slightly this year from what it was in the past to inspire, reward and celebrate the spirit of exploration and discovery. You guys know this area is really founded on that spirit of discovery and you see it in, you know, the history and you see it in the people that live here. We're all, it seems like that's a, that's a kind of motif for, for what this destination is about. We think that's important because it represents the area, but it also represents what happens in tourism when people go visit places. Part of what the reason they're going is that, that spirit of discovery. And so I think there's a good compliment there. And so that's what we, what we've done with the vision is to celebrate that. The mission really simplified to fuel transformational growth in the tri cities through tourism. And so by bringing people in, we create this positive economic cycle. They bring their dollars from outside and spend them here. And again, that contributes to the community vitality. So a visitor economy works, it works that way. Those dollars come from the outside and you can see the numbers here, about six hundred million in economic impact. These numbers come from Tourism Economics, which is an Oxford University organization. So they've got, you know, pretty sophisticated system to dial into how, calculate those dollars. But we get about six hundred million in economic impact through visitors, about three point seven million visitors a year, according to their information. Direct jobs in the community. So these are people's livelihoods. There's about fifty seven hundred of those in hospitality and tourism in our community. So pretty substantial. I was thinking about that the other day. P N and L employs over six thousand. So one organization has about as many as all of the hospitality organizations. But you put them together and, and we make up a pretty good force. Tourism is a pretty, pretty important business driver in the community. And it also, those businesses provide quality of life for the residents that are here. The hospitality businesses provide opportunities, quality of life amenities. And so that's important. And then about seventy five million dollars in taxes. And, and as you know, those, that you have the direct spending, but you have the indirect spending businesses that support hospitality. You get the labor income, you get all of those things and just the quality of life and then the tax revenues. And according to Tourism Economics, those tax revenues offset our own taxes, our personal taxes by about six hundred dollars per family per year. So it's, it's actually a benefit to the locals because those visitors are helping offset some of those other services, as you can see the next slide. This, this is a nice wheel and you guys have probably heard this statement before, but if you build a place that people want to visit, then you've built a place where people want to live. And if you have a place where people want to live, then they want to work. If they work there, they want to invest in that community and that's another part of that cycle. That's why visitation is so important. Okay. So now we'll get into some of the numbers of what happened this year. Well, just a little bit more background, our, our office, and you can go forward. Yeah, that's fine. We've, we've built what we're doing off of five strategic pillars. We have strategic sales where we go out and try and bring group business in. Effective marketing where we're actually marketing, promoting the destination through advertising and those things. Collaborative community and destination development. We're heavily involved in, in the development of our communities with the, you know, Trek Committee, the National Park Committee and all kinds of other organizations that we, we're involved with and helping steer and drive the decisions. Practical community engagement is really important and then innovation in our organization. We just try and stay innovative and make sure that our work is meaningful for our employees and for the community around. Now I think we get into the numbers. The revenues for twenty twenty three, we had just over three million dollars in revenue and you can see the breakdown of that seventy percent from the tourism promotion areas. Twenty two, twenty three percent out of those contracts that we have with the cities for that lodging tax. And then the memberships in corporates about seven percent. So, and then the breakdown of where those expenses go, most of it goes to marketing and convention and sports sales. That's where we're spending the most of our money, which is what we're, what we're here to do. Okay, next. This, I, I think this slide is important. Realize currently the city of West Richland doesn't have any hotel properties and we'd like to change that. And so you can see the, the benefit of that. This is hotel motel tax revenue that's coming into the cities over the last few years. In twenty twenty three, a total of about two million dollars in hotel motel tax revenue came into our communities. That's, you know, quite a bit up from twenty twenty when there wasn't visitation going on in, in the area. So you can see the growth there. Next up. We, this year, I'll just talk about some of the accomplishments we did. One of the things we did in twenty twenty three was analyze our messaging strategy. And at the annual meeting last November, we announced this, this new strategy to go forward and just try and condense, simplify the message. So five real core visitor categories that help people from the outside look at this destination. And when people say, what, what is, what's in the tri cities? That's what's in the tri cities. We have wineries and vineyards, river recreation, history and science, events and entertainment. And then of course, we're surrounded by sunshine and open spaces. And I think by simplifying it that way, it, it makes it real clear for the visitor and easy for them to then identify what am I looking for and work their way down the funnel. And that's what we want to do. Next up. There's a video here that you can watch. We sent it in the packet. I won't show it because of the zoom. Kind of makes that lag and get jittery and whatever. We'll skip over that one. So you can just skip this. It's a great video though. It's our manifesto and just kind of describes what this destination is all about, what we feel the heart of it is, that spirit of discovery and it showcases the area quite well. A couple of things that we did this year that we're really proud of, we were able to lock in this Ironman event that's coming in the Ironman seventy point three in September. So major signature event. And then another one that we were bringing in is the World Horseshoe Pitching Championship. So I like to say we've got both ends of the spectrum there. Two different kind of athletes and two different styles of people. But they're both good for the economy and they're both good for our area. They're bringing people from around the country. I think the Ironman event now has, I still haven't figured out if we've got all fifty states yet. I need to, I know we were at forty eight before, but I know we're over twenty three hundred registrations for the Ironman event right now. Twenty five hundred would be a sellout. So we should hit that pretty easily because we've got, you know, a fair amount of time still coming up before that. But, and then the horseshoes will bring in eight hundred, a thousand to a thousand horseshoe pitchers who will be here in the summer to pitch in the Toyota Center and Toyota Arena for about ten days of horseshoe pitching. So when they bring their, their families with them, that's a lot of revenue that comes in over the course of that time as well. We estimate between six to eight million dollars in economic impact from those events alone. And you'll see that in the numbers going forward as we look at some of the projections. So we're excited about this, this idea. I love the fact that with West Richland, we got the Arco event, the, at the, at the race, Arca, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Fantastic addition to the series there. And that will play big into the marketing and messaging strategy as one of our signature events as well. That whole series should play into it. So really think that's great. So moving on, this shows you a little bit of the dynamics in twenty twenty three. The number of groups that we hosted was actually down slightly, but the number of visitors from those groups was up. So we had fewer groups, but more visitors. And so the end result was our group spending was up about six percent, a little over six percent in twenty twenty three for group business. In twenty twenty four and beyond, so these numbers are, are not just twenty four, but they're, these, these numbers are projections from groups that have been booked for twenty twenty four and beyond. We have a hundred and twenty one of those booked now. Hundred and forty thousand visitors projected and forty nine million in projected spending. You can see the spending has gone way up. But again, that, that stretches out beyond twenty twenty four. There's for those, those groups that go on there. So some good news going on there and I'm really pleased to, you know, our sales team is doing a really good job of getting out and getting RFPs out to the hotels for more groups. The projections so far are the first of twenty four. Look really good. Next slide. Website and our marketing efforts are doing really good. Page views are up fifty four percent. Social media followers are up twelve percent. We've got twenty three million digital impressions. All of the, all of the numbers there are looking really good. And this year, we're, we've, we're working, collaborating with a data provider that's going to help us track, we call it attribution. So if a person sees an ad in Seattle on their device and then that device shows up in our area, we, we can get some semblance of they, they saw, they looked at our stuff and they showed up here, stayed in a hotel or whatever. And, and so next year, when I report, I'll have even more data to, to get back on, you know, what's, what's actually showing up from there. That's the marketing side. I talked about the committees that were on the, the River Shore Enhancement Council, the National Park Committee. We have a wine tourism council. We've got the Tri-City Sports Council and just a number of things. We're on the Legislative Committee. So we're just, just heavily involved as an organization in, in all of the dynamics of our community. And we think that's really important. We want to make sure that we're supporting and helping build the community and that our efforts are in collaboration with the other efforts that are going on. So that's part of that. And then, as I said, the, the organization, I think we've done a good job. It was my first year and so, you know, got a year under my belt now. I'm glad to say that we're financially stable. We got through successfully that way. We developed and put together a dashboard for key metrics that we track and report on every month and it's available. If you want access to that, you're, you're able to go on and look at the numbers, the key metrics that we're tracking. And we continue to make refinements on that. We, we want you guys to know that the work we're doing is important and effective. And, and as we watch that data, then we're able to dial it in even better and make changes where we see we need to. So that's, that's the gist of our presentation. It's been a fun year and I think we got an even exciting, more exciting one coming up with these events and things. It's great to be part of the, the growing communities here.
Counsel, any questions of Kevin this evening? Councilman Bloom?
Have you figured out, are, are you monitoring any measurable benefit associated with the racetrack?
I don't have specific numbers to share with that, but you know, I know that the hotels in Richland are, are doing well on the racing weekends, you know.
Well, that's indication.
Yeah, that's indication. And so I think though, with this new tracking that we're, this attribution tracking that we're getting, what we essentially do is, is geofence those points of interest. And so we can start to see if these folks are actually coming to those areas and tracking that. So I'm hoping to have more, more detail on that. But I, I can say anecdotally, yeah, they, they do make an impact, the, the, the race events.
Just don't have the motel hotel.
That's right. Yeah. You don't get that benefit and, you know, there are some other benefits that come with it. But until you get that hospitality, entertainment industry, you won't get the direct benefit for it from the city.
Now I will, I will touch base a little bit on the NASCAR Arca series that's coming to town. That's another big one besides the other two. Hotel motel taxes go directly to the cities. And I do, I do understand that Richland does share some funds with the Red Mountain Event Center because they know the positive impact that that facility has on their hotel motel. So
Thank you, mayor, for bringing that to attention because that's absolutely right. They, they get that money. They make it then available for event organizers or others to apply for and
Doesn't, doesn't necessarily come directly to us, but they, they are beneficiaries of it, which they can put back in the facility. So the only thing that I could ask of you is the, the, the other cities that haven't participated in that gifting. There are also hotel beds and heads.
Right.
Beds and, you know, any prodding from, from the people of your stature to certainly appreciate.
Yeah.
You know.
Let them, let them know that it's, it's generating business all the way around.
At hand, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I was going to follow up, you know, West Richland and Richland are, you know, supporting the Ironman aspect.
For sure.
Maybe Kennewich could kick some money in back from the motel because of that.
Because they're giving, yeah, some of the business there. Yeah. Good point.
All right, Kevin. Thank you so much for coming this evening. We appreciate everything you do and especially the national parks with Gretchen and all she does. She's wonderful, does a super job keeping us all lined out in the MPS and really appreciate having her. So thank her for me.
I will.
Because she keeps me on track as the chat.
She's pretty detailed, pretty good at that and I really appreciate that.
After her name.
That's right. Yeah, exactly. I, I did want to mention too, I really appreciate the staff, the West Richland staff in working with the Ironman. And they've just been really honestly delightful to work with. That's a, sounds like a, you know, kind of a fluffy phrase, but it's, 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 it's a pleasant experience and, and just there's good energy. And so I really appreciate your teams. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kevin. All right, counsel, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening. And the consent agenda is just standard business operations of the city and city council is taken with one motion and a vote. And the consent agenda consists this evening of payment of the bills. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Resolution twenty four twenty four authorizing a purchase and sale agreement for real property for well number twelve site. Resolution twenty five twenty four execute transportation impact fee mitigation agreement for parcel number one dash zero two nine seven dash one zero zero dash zero 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 one dash zero twenty four and repeal resolution twenty three twenty. Resolution twenty six twenty four to execute transportation impact fee mitigation agreement for Platte Road and Mountain Multi-Use Phase Two. Resolution twenty seven twenty four to execute and enter, excuse me, to execute the interagency data sharing agreement with Office of Washington State Auditor. Resolution twenty eight twenty four execute interlocal agreement for school zone pedestrian improvements projects with Richland School District. Resolution twenty nine twenty four authorized the mayor to enter negotiation of the Bureau of Land Management for land purchases for parks. Resolution, resolution thirty twenty four authorized the mayor to enter negotiations with Bureau of Land Management to purchase for stormwater facility. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement participation form to participate in the Johnson and Johnson opioid settlement. Motion to adopt two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six strategic plan for the city of West Richland. Motion to execute T I B Complete Streets Grant Agreement with Candy Mountain Pathway Kennedy Road Crossing Project. Motion to execute the T I B Complete Streets Grant Agreement for School Zone Pedestrian Improvement Project. Motion to award the Finance H V A C Replacement Project. Motion to submit to Department of Justice Patrick Lee Hay, hopefully I pronounced that right, Bulletproof Fast Partnership Program Application. Motion to submit the Washington Auto Theft Authority Grant Application. Motion to submit the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission Officer Wellness Grant Application. With all that, is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one in the audience, anybody virtually, please raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone. No.
Counsel may have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Now we have our first opportunity for citizen public comments for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to provide comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll have three minutes to make your comments and a reminder that questions will not be answered through a conversation between the speaker or the council members this evening. We'll go ahead and start with anybody in house here. Like to address counsel this evening for items not on the agenda.
My name is David Cole. I live at seventeen ten seventeen ten Ironwood. Yeah, and changed the street. I'd like to read a letter to counsel on behalf of Dean and Cindy Rents and Rob and Christina Palmer.
This is for items that are on, and if it has to do with the cannabis issue that we'll be addressing a little bit later, you can make comment at that point in time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else in house? And anybody virtually like to make comment this evening for items not on the agenda? Stephanie, do you?
I do not see any hands. No.
We will go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. And this particular item, councilmember Bloom is excusing himself from participating this evening because it has to do with his request. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding a frontage improvement waiver for a property on Everett Street. As you'll hear from the staff report from Roscoe Slade shortly, staff is not recommending approval of this waiver. So with that, there has not been a resolution prepared for this evening. So, or excuse me, Roscoe Slade, report, staff report. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor. The property owner Benton County Parcel one zero six nine eight two oh two oh seven eight zero zero zero, commonly known as lot seventy eight of section six, has submitted a petition for a frontage improvement waiver dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The city council is required to adopt a resolution fixing a time when a public hearing for the frontage improvement waiver petition will be heard and determined. Said time should not be more than ninety days nor less than twenty one days after the passage of the resolution. Resolution eighteen twenty four adopted on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four establishes Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four city council meeting as the time when a public hearing will occur on the petition. At the April sixteenth, twenty twenty four city council meeting, the city council will take public comment on the issue and then determine if a frontage improvement waiver will be or will not be approved. If the frontage improvement waiver is approved, the city council may place conditions on the waiver. Per West Richland Municipal Code, notices were mailed to abutting property owners within six hundred feet of the subject property. The subject property was posted and the notice was posted in several locations around the city as required. The property owner of lot seventy eight, section six, per West Richland Municipal Code twelve oh four oh three oh C four, with the construction of new single family residential dwelling unit is required to complete roadway frontage improvements to Everett Street prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a building permit. That section also allows for administrative exemptions to frontage improvements for a single family, a new single family residential building permit. If there are not roadway improvements meeting the city standards within two hundred feet of the property. Had there been that, then there would have been an outright administrative exemption. The property owner would simply be providing a L I D waiver in the future and dedicating a road right of way for the municipal code. Per section, West Richland Municipal Code twelve oh four six oh, a waiver from the application of any of the provisions of this chapter may be granted by the Sydney Council by resolution with or without conditions upon the findings that a waiver from the terms or requirements of chapter will no way be detrimental interests of the city. Will not be contrary to its intent or to the public interest, safety, health and welfare. And where due special conditions or exceptional characteristics of the subject property, a little enforcement of this chapter results in practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. Currently, Everett Street is classified as a local roadway and has been previously improved to city roadway standards between Pinnacle Drive to the northwest corner of lot seventy eight, section six, the lot that does petition for a waiver. The nearest frontage improvement to Everett Street are adjacent to the northwest corner of this property. And ordinance thirty one nineteen, section six, lower, local roadway plan shows Everett Street as a planned city street from Pinnacle Drive east to South Fifty Fourth Avenue. And then current condition of Everett Street in this location, it's been improved to meet eighty appendix D of the International Fire Code, basically twenty foot wide gravel. Staff recommends that council deny the petition, frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvements to portion of Everett Street for lot seventy eight, section six, associated with a pending building permit for a new single family dwelling unit. Staff's recommending, recommendation for denial is based on the fact that there are existing frontage improvements meeting current city standards constructed within two hundred feet of the lot. They're actually immediately adjacent to the northwest corner of lot seventy eight, section six. And cities council granting of the frontage waiver would not be consistent with West Richland Municipal Code previously noted. Staff believes granting the frontage waiver would be detrimental to the best interest of the city, would be contrary to the intent of the public interest, safety and health and welfare. While the area of Everett Street is impacted by elevated groundwater levels, this is not a special condition limited just to Everett Street. And a little enforcement of this chapter would not result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships that are any different to the difficulties of constructing roadways in other areas of section one and section six that the property owner will experience designing and constructing single family home on property with elevated groundwater. With the denial of the petition, the frontage improvement waiver, the property owner of lot seventy eight, section six would be required to design and construct roadway and frontage improvements to Everett Street. It's approximately two hundred and seventeen feet and dedicate twenty five feet of road right of way along, along with a twelve foot utility usement prior to the city's issuance of certificate of occupancy. The local city roadway standards for in the RL forty zoning is thirty two foot wide asphalt pavement with storm drainage facilities. Curb gutter sidewalk improvements are not required in the RL forty zoning per the West Richland Municipal Code.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at six twenty nine. If you'd like to make comment in regards to this.
Mayor, can I go to the ones that, that staff's already received? We, we did receive from public comments before the council meeting. So, so I'll just go ahead and note the ones that we've had. Sorry, Richard. So we received five, the city clerk, five, correct me if I'm wrong, emails that came into the city clerk. And just for the record, so that they know, I'm not going to read them. Some of them may be in the audience, but there was five comments received, all in support of the waiver. So from John and Linda Clark, support the waiver. I didn't get their address, but I believe they're addressed off of fifty eight. They're in the northwest corner of Everett and fifty eight. And Andrew Lord supports the waiver at sixty twenty one Everett. Audra Richter supports the waiver. Her address is fifty eight eighty nine Everett. Mr. Bloom supports the waiver, the applicant at sixty eighty seven Everett. And Avani Bloom also supports the waiver is what we received in council. You were provided with those email comments prior to the council meeting.
All other ones, seven. Okay. And with that, we'll have And with that, we'll have three minutes for comments in your public hearing, and the public hearing is opened at six thirty.
My name is Richard Bloom, somebody you may know me. I live at fifty-nine hundred Everett. My wife and I have applied for this waiver in association with contracting a new home at sixty eighty-seven Everett, designed to better serve the next phase of our life. I want to build a new house. I do not have to build a new house. My only path forward with construction is the waiver. Without it, the financial risk is too great. I need an answer tonight. I submitted a lengthy public comment last Friday and have provided copies of that on your datum. Adias, the process preparing for this has been ongoing for over two years. Yesterday, I had planned to start pouring concrete for the foundation. But based on the non-support for the waiver, I have that suspended. Fortunately, I do not have too much skin in the game where I can't afford to take my significant loss and walk away from the project. I will sit on the project indefinitely with water, sewer and electric fees prepaid and let the appreciation the like so many other properties. I real. The reality is that because of groundwater issue, I have no definitive path disposal, not only for the groundwater, but within the right of way, much less the runoff water. Tonight, you approved potentially acquiring a lot across the street for a water facility, potentially. I have to have this built and occupied, and I can't wait. So if you notice, the staff report fails to address the solution to the groundwater. There's no definitive solution. I can make a temporary solution. Other than having less than two hundred feet of paved roadway to maintain, there's no downsides to the city of granting the waiver. Without the waiver, the city's loss will be greater than mine. Reduced economic development, sales tax, property tax and REIT. I would also like to point out that the paved portion of Everett that Mr. Slade talks about between Pinnacle and my property is showing signs of serious deterioration. Numerous large cracks potentially due to the pumping mitigation of groundwater towards the city's pumping operation at Pinnacle and Everett. I point out that in, this is what the groundwater looks like while I was pumping. And when I put in the electrical line, and it's the last page of the report you have on your desk. It overflows in the winter. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
My name is Bonnie Bloom. I live in West Richland. Richard Bloom is my father. Considering all that my father has done for the city, I find the backhanded action by city staff to be appalling. I strongly support the request for my father for council to take action tonight. Per West Richland Municipal Code, the decision to grant the waiver is up to the city council, not staff. What is the point of a public meeting if the item is to be decided behind closed doors at city hall and sprung on a victim at the last minute? Is this a dictatorship? I urge you to make the right decision. I know my mother, if council does not act, my mother will not allow construction to proceed. My parents will not be moving from their current home, and they will not be moving to a more appropriate setting. Action can't be taken by councils. Action can't be taken by council because the staff assumed that they were all powerful and didn't bother to provide a formal resolution. Per Municipal Research and Services, city council does not need a formal drafted resolution to act. A simple resolution by council is equivalent to a resolution. A simple motion of council approval of the waiver is all that is needed. I move to grant the frontage improvement waiver. There's no need to condition the waiver since you have assured that my father will do what's best for the citizens of West Richland. Thank you.
Anyone else in house this evening?
Hello, council mayor. So I'm Richard's neighbor. My name is Reg Wainwright. Lot seventy-nine, directly adjacent to the parcel that he wishes to build on that the waiver is on a table for. You know, my wife, Erica and I and our three kids, we moved to this area because we support, you know, the rural community and section six. We like living on a gravel road. That's a personal preference. For us to build a house and come to this area and get the land that that we liked. Again, I'm a private citizen, not a developer. The way that we were able to make that happen for our family was to divide lot seventy-nine in a short plot that we worked with Eric and Roscoe in the city on years ago, several years ago. One of the conditions of that short plot was that we put in this road that is now subject to to being paved. And that was added in a red line markup late in the process after I'd already done a lot of the the initial budget feasibility for for myself. And I get that's different in this situation, but the thing that that isn't different is the fact that, you know, I I spent sixty-five thousand dollars on that road. I had to go source a ninety-five thousand dollar performance bond, which I had a hard time sourcing and getting into place to put this road in place. And there were other options on the table to meet the fire code. So one of the things I did notice is I noticed that the mission up there, the the statement that we all live by here is a commitment to excellence, serving the needs of the citizens, seeking continuous citizen involvement through transparency and government policies, and ensuring that we also support the city's strategic direction. And I get that we have a plan and that plan involves improvements. What I don't understand is imposing heavy, you know, financial obligations on citizens such as myself and Richard to fund roadway improvements without a permanent solution for this groundwater issue. I can dig a hole this spring. I dug a hole after the winter rains and some of the snow melted in many areas of my property adjacent to this. And with a shovel and one scoop, I had water coming up from the ground. This is this monitoring well that was part of the improvements that I put in. It does overflow at times during the year. Right? When I did my groundwater study to support my home construction as a condition of the short plot, it was four to five feet down, but it fluctuates. And I hate to see the money, if this waiver is not approved, the money that comes out of Richard's pocket. I hate to see that be torn up to put in the future improvement years down the road without the big picture in mind. So again, I know my time's up. I support this waiver and I'm available for anything else needed. So thank you.
Anyone else this evening, the audience?
Andrew Lord, I live at sixty twenty-one Everett, so also neighbors with Richard and with Reg. So I want to support this waiver. So, you know, living to the northeast of Richard and downhill, I get the water runoff that comes down. Currently, I operate two sump pumps and those run year round to keep water out of my basement. So, you know, as Richard mentioned, Reg had mentioned, as the snow is melting out, we're getting water flowing down. The B L M property that's located to the the west of me is a low point. So one of my concerns is if we build a hard impervial service across the road, gonna, you know, dam up essentially groundwater that surfaces pretty commonly along that road and intercept and otherwise divert water that would head down to the B L M. So that's going to really tax my system. It's going to be more of an issue for me. Just getting access in and out of out of my roadways there down in the back of my property when it's raining or when we have runoff, you know, the the little lawn tractor gets stuck, right? It just turns into a mud hole. Also, I know we'd submitted a petition to to reclassify that road to a fire service road to remain gravel. And so as Reg had mentioned, one of the things that drew my family to this area is having, you know, living on a gravel road, being in a rural area. That's something that we wanted, that we sought out, and it was a high value when we we purchased the property. So in conclusion, in support of the waiver, thank you.
Anyone else in house this evening?
And Richie, five oh eight Austin Drive. I took the opportunity to go up and walk the area today. And what I keep hearing, what I keep coming away with is the same problem we've had in other areas of West Richland. You have citizens that have, through no fault of their own, problems that they need help dealing with. This groundwater is a problem. Down at the polo grounds, you may recall that little fiasco that went on for years and years. It took a lot of work to get that resolved. And I would encourage the city to turn around and help this community. It's not just the single applicant that we're talking about today. It's the community up there to deal with what seems to be an ongoing problem in our city. Thank you.
Anyone else locally? In house?
Nancy Aldrich, three four zero five South Lake Drive. I'm going to be the one person in the room that does not support this waiver. The reason is, is that Mr. Bloom was on city council in twenty nineteen when the vote passed, when there was a vote and the street improvement plan or the local roadway plan for section six was approved. I always, when I was on city council, I always reminded people, you need to do your due diligence before you decide to buy a lot and build on a lot. At that time, when that roadway plan was approved, a waiver was required to build. If you are not within two hundred, if you were within two hundred, let me put it this way, a waiver was required. He is within two hundred feet of the local improvements. So in your own ordinance that says that that waiver cannot be approved. I understand that there is stormwater problems throughout the city or groundwater problems throughout the city. I was around during during polo. The city came together and solved that problem. The city is working on solving the problem up in section 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 six. But I do tell people, before you buy property, do your diligent, do your due diligence and find out if you have to build road improvements, if you have groundwater problems before you actually build the lot, buy the lot to build on. Then you won't be in this position of requesting a waiver. And since that wasn't done, I don't, I would recommend council not approve this waiver. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience this evening? Seeing no one in the audience, we'll move to virtual. If anybody would like to make comments, public hearing, raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Close the public hearing at six forty-three. And council, there is a motion that is on the staff report. Do I have a motion this evening?
I move to deny the petition, frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvements to a portion of Everett Street for lot seventy-eight, section six, associated with a pending building permit.
Motion, do I have a second?
Seconds, we have discussion.
Counsel, do you have any more questions of Mr. Slade in regards to this agenda item this evening? Counsel, council member Moran?
Thank you very much. So as someone who has also been on planning commission, this is something that seems fairly cut and dry to me. And on one hand, I know that there is a lot of emotion surrounding this, but when it comes down to this, this is quasi judicial, correct? Yes, so we cannot have emotions be the thing that's pushing us on this. The rules that have been approved is that when this particular area. Sorry, hearing whispering.
Can I interrupt just very briefly? If if it is a quasi judicial, should we have the Jessica read our rules of engagement or not?
Good call.
We can. The rules are really just meant to ensure that it is impartial. We have not, we generally don't go through that process for this type of review, but certainly we can.
Usually a closed record hearing is when we go through that. I was going to ask, matter of fact, let's go, you know, you can go ahead and and finish your comments. And and after the council's done, I'm going to also ask Jesse to to weigh in as well. So we have had conversation regards to this. I think it would be beneficial if council also heard what our legal team has to say.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, good points, very good points. I, it kind of threw me, but then I realized, oh, yeah, no, I I had to ask because I hadn't heard it. So with this, there were, there was, as Commissioner Aldrich had stated, there was the roadway plan that had been approved and it had very specific things stated in it where if you were within a certain area of items of lots that have had improvements already done, that you would not be able to put forth a waiver. So in that, it seems fairly cut and dry. Now, there is the question that had been raised here regarding disproportionate to current need, significant adverse impacts and where was it? Unnecessary hardships to the property owner, which I did have a question on onus regarding unnecessary hardship. But it does seem, other than that, to be a fairly cut and dry thing where if there is the rule, because it's quasi judicial, we have to follow the rule. If we don't, there are possible legal ramifications to making exemptions when it comes to not following consistency and the possibility of issues with the appearance of fairness doctrine, seeing as the petitioner specifically is a member of council. So that is where I'm at currently, but I am more than happy to listen to others.
Council member Smart?
Yes, well, I'm not very emotional about this, but I I, before the subject of whether or not this is quasi judicial came up, I I have to first ask if if it's something that we can't deny or waive, why are we being asked? But I'll leave that for a later conversation. But what I would say about this before that topic came up is that this, the end of the pavement currently ends at the at the end of, I think it's R M six, and and Mr. Bloom's property is the first in R L forty. And so section six is generally developed as gravel roads. Some of them are more like goat trails. There are, I think the only roads that have been paved are those where the neighbors have agreed to the development to a paved road standard and have entered into an L I D. What I'm hearing from these neighbors is they have no desire whatsoever to have a paved road in front of their homes. I'm not passing judgment on the water issue. I don't know the answer to that. Maybe it's maybe it can be mitigated, maybe it can't. It certainly is a, an interesting topic to consider, but there's no actual, there's no good data except for what Mr. Bloom has presented, which is that there is a lot of water and the other neighbors, there's a lot of water there. And I certainly have enough experience to know that water and pavement don't mix. But really, my my problem with denying, or you know, I guess it's a, we'd have to approve the request in order to deny the waiver. I'm sorry, to not to deny, yeah. The 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 question is, do we want to approve the waiver? I, I think you have to draw the line somewhere between, you know, the end of the neighborhood pavement and the R L forty two and a half acre parcels. In this case, this parcel looks like it's a little bit smaller, but I I'm not sure I agree with forcing that line to be moved, you know, two hundred and seventeen feet or whatever it is. If the neighbors aren't desirous of that. So if we have an option to legally deny the motion, I have to go back and read it. That's on a different screen, sorry. But if we have that option as council and we're not in violation of Washington state law, I see no reason not to allow Mr. Bloom and his neighbors to continue to enjoy their their gravel road as do the vast majority of other residents in the entirety of section six. So that's my thought on it.
So with that, I'm going to ask. So with that, I'm going to ask Jessica if she would review some of the conversations that we've had. And Councilman Smart, you made a point in regards to Washington state law. There's also city code, uh, comp plan, uh, road plan, all of, all of the above. And what is the potential, uh, potential litigation if we don't follow our own rules and regulations within the city?
Yeah, let me come back on that, Mr. Mayor. I mean, that's true, but that's why we have a waiver process. That's the whole meaning of waiving an ordinance. If we have, if we feel that something, we, we do this with road improvements on other properties all of the time. We waive easement or, um, sorry, you know, sidewalk and gutter improvement. This, I can't count the number of times we've done that in the last year. So I'm, maybe I'm confused and think this is a different process, but it sounds like we have a rule that says you have to do this. Now, I know that I've had discussion with Roscoe in the past about, um, waiving certain parts of a street improvement requirement in section six. For example, if we want to pave the road, but we don't want streetlights specifically. And the education I've received is that we can, as a city can do that, that can come before council. And we can say, yeah, these guys want to pave the road, but they don't want streetlights. So we'll waive that requirement on that road improvement. We can also waive sidewalks, we can waive gutters, we can waive, um, we could probably waive French drains in this case, since it would pretty much be useless, uh, given the water conditions. I don't know, I'm just speculating there, but the point here is, is that we waive requirements all the time. So I'd, I'm curious to hear how this is different.
And, and every waiver is handled individually, case by case. Is that correct?
I, I believe so.
Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So because of the nature of this hearing, it is quasi judicial because it involves the rights of a individual property owner as opposed to like a zoning, a text amendment or something like that, which would involve the rights of numerous parties. That said, you know, state law dictates to what quasi judicial hearings, the appearance of fairness applies. Now, nothing in state law says, oh, a frontage improvement waiver is one of these. However, it describes the type of hearings, one of which is a variance, which is effectively what we're being asked here. The code would say that this individual has to comply with this portion of the code. Are we going to let them vary from that by giving a waiver? So the question is not whether you can grant the waiver. The question is, um, number one, does the hearing appear to be fair? But based on the appearance of fairness, which, um, as you mentioned, you know, we could go through those questions. We obviously knew in this situation that Mr. Bloom had a clear conflict and he recused himself for that reason. But the secondary concern is, uh, is, is due process provided? Are we basing the decision on, on facts, facts in the record, right? So the waiver, in order to grant the waiver, um, you are allowed to do that under the code, but you have to make specific findings based on the record that the requirements, the waiver, from the terms will in no way be detrimental to the best interest of the city or contrary to its intent or the public interest, safety, health and welfare. Or, and where due to special conditions or exceptional characteristics of the subject property, a literal enforcement of this chapter result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. So, you know, the situation we have here is that staff has evaluated those, those conditions based on their knowledge of this and has made a recommendation. They're not a proponent or an opponent per se as a party, um, but they are recommending based on what they know of the city as a whole, what they believe the conclusion should be here. So council certainly could, um, direct staff, you know, vote this down or modify the, the motion to ask staff to prepare resolution. But certainly there are, there is potential legal liability if there are not specific facts articulating what in the record convinced council to do that. And I think the other thing council should be cautious about is if we get future waivers or requests for waivers for similar circumstances and a decision is made differently, um, we could have issues. So, you know, in that sense, it is somewhat of a slippery slope. And that just goes back to, you know, the decision needs to be made on facts that are in the record. I don't know if that answered all your questions.
Thank you. Roscoe?
Yeah, just to your question, Councilor Smart, that's a good thing. Part of the research that staff did was going back and looking at previous waivers that were issued for frontage improvements. And the majority of them are along Van Gisem. And the reason they were granted that is because we have a state funding to fully do those improvements in the future. And there was a high probability they were going to be a throwaway. There's been waivers out in the middle of section six that's councils granted because it didn't make sense. Whether it was a division of land or a single family, it didn't make sense to do three hundred and thirty feet of furniture improvements when they had to go several hundred feet to get to a pavement. You know, so we've granted, and that was the finding in that one. We've also done one, uh, around the corner for the Clarks that was just done last year. They had a shop building, uh, that they were building and came in and council granted a waiver. They didn't, they thought that was a financial hardship to require a corner lot to build both sides of that road because, just because they did an outbuilding or a non-commercial shop. And so they, they did that. This one is unique. We haven't had one come forward to council where it's a single family building permit that's getting built that abuts roadway standards. And so, um, staff couldn't find any findings of facts to justify it. With these, it's not staff's thing to come and promote them. We're simply providing the facts. It's up to the applicant to provide the facts or the findings of facts that make you want to grant the waiver. In this case, it just said the elevated groundwater, which we know is not unique to Everett Street or to this property. It's in section one, it's in section six. And the thought is, is you can build a house in it, I can build a road. But that's up to council to go and decide what they want to do with it. And the other part is staff doesn't bring negative, uh, motions. So that's why you just see the denial. If you have findings of fact and you direct staff to go back, then we'll draft the resolution and bring it back at the next council meeting for consent agenda with those findings of fact. That's, that's up to council's thing. But the big thing, uh, that the city attorney is saying is you just have to have findings of fact. You just can't grant a waiver because you granted a waiver. That, that's what will get us into trouble and be consistent. The other part of this, there was mention, uh, no advance notice. Mr. Bloom attended a technical review committee meeting in September of last year, where he was notified of these requirements, that you would build a road or you can apply for a waiver. So that was in September of twenty twenty-three. He was also advised of, he needed to do a wetland and some geotech work. So all this was known a while, a while ago. And, you know, the petition wasn't submitted until February this year. So, I mean, just to make sure that's clear, that this wasn't something that was just dropped in the middle of this construction. We try to be very transparent with this stuff to our public going forward.
In regards to Department of Ecology and an impervious surface and, and asphalt pavement, what, how does ecology, uh, weigh the two?
You're referring to the gravel road? That's, yeah, they, they consider a compacted gravel road, the same as a paved road. It's, it's considered an impervious surface. But there's no, some of the conditions and stuff that were mentioned here, they will take further investigation. There wasn't data provided.
Council member Fettle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was part of my comments, Roscoe, was majority of, if not majority, all of the waivers we've seen, at least since I've been on council since twenty eighteen, have been middle block type of parcels, not edges within the, I think that's what difference makes this different for me, is within the two hundred feet requirement. I did have a question now, this water issue is not new. When did this first surface, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? Surface, that was by accident. But we've been dealing with this for a long time. We spent a lot of money on that survey trying to figure out where this water was coming from. It was discovered that it was overwatering of lawns, is that right?
Uh, that was one of the contributing factors, yes. And the fact of the, the sub basin or the clay layer and caliche layers that was pooling it in multiple pools up there. Yes, that's correct.
Holding in like, uh, I think we use the, uh, the example of like an egg carton, where it's not just simply a, a bowl, we can stick a straw and it's kind of different layers. I guess my question would be if we approve the denial, and Mr. Bloom builds a road, is there any dam, is there any potential loss to now city property that we would be looking at because of the, the surfacing water from underneath?
Yeah, as part of the design, there probably be, need to be some geotech work done to make sure that the road is constructed to deal with the, the elevated groundwater.
Thank you. And the only other thing I would say is, um, uh, you know, I struggle with this one only simply because of, and kind of to Attorney Foltz's comments, I struggle with this one simply because of the name on the application. If the name was John Smith and not Richard Bloom, that's probably been a lot easier decision. But because of the name on there and, and to Ms. Bloom's comments, because of the, the dedication Richard has given to the city, this is a tough one. But ultimately, I think we have to sit to what we have done in the past and, and how we, how the law, how the rules are written and deny the request.
Council member Stoker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, as Mr. Bloom did point out from consent agenda item six I, there's potential that the city's going to acquire the lot across the street, or the roadway there. So the city also would have some form of responsibility for these kind of improvements as well. Is that not true?
The city's interest would be looking at the road right away, not the water that's collected by private property owners.
I'm speaking to the construction of the road itself.
Yeah, we would not have any, the city would not be building that road. Once it's built to city standards, the city would be responsible for maintaining it in the future.
But if the city acquires that lot across the street, then the city is a property owner and should be held to the same rules as a property owner, other property owner.
You're saying if we acquire it in the future and build a storm, absolutely.
Because that's, that was six I, right, is acquiring lot seventy-seven across the roadway.
That's correct, Mr. Stoker.
So just hypothetically speaking, if Mr. Bloom was to build this road to city standards, and I guess upfront, he would have to cover the full cost, but the city would have to reimburse at some point if that lot is acquired and used for city purposes.
It's, that's not the way it's set up in the code.
So how does Mr. Bloom get? Half of, yeah, how does he get half of his work reimbursed?
I'm following your code. This is the way it's set up. We, you have people build roads. We don't build half roads. When a developer or somebody comes in, they build the full road.
So if it's somebody else who comes in and acquires that lot, Mr. Bloom still required upfront to pay for that? And he gets no, uh, retribution out of it in the end?
You're responsible for the code to build your frontage, which is the thirty.
Well, I think we need to really reconsider that code.
Well, we, we used to, and it was reconsidered because when you go back twenty years, they were building half roads that didn't meet the thing. And council said, this is garbage, you need to build the entire road. And so that's why it was changed. There's a lot of what ifs.
But the city has impact.
Approved an application to look and acquire a lot that it hasn't happened. Mr. Mendenhall was looking at BLM lots, mentioned he was going to put something to council. And I said, this may be a good lot to acquire because we know we still have elevated groundwater in that area. It doesn't change the requirement what Mr. Bloom needs to do as far as frontage improvements for that parcel.
Well, I have a hard time with that then, and I can agree that, uh, you know, when it's a full development that's doing this, everybody around there is benefiting from that and they pay for it in the purchase of their homes. This is an instance though, where I find that the burden is kind of overly harsh on a single property owner that somebody else benefits from and never has to shuck out a dime in, in reconciliations. So, um, whether it's Mr. Bloom or anybody else, I have a hard, hard time with that kind of thought process personally. And I mean, I'm looking at the map right here, so I can see what's going on.
So, Mr. Stoker, I can tell you the LADs that were formed out there, BLM doesn't participate. And so, uh, when those were formed, the city picked up the tab. So all the residents, uh, and the city paid for those frontage improvements and those LADs. Because BLM doesn't participate in them.
Understand, and BLM is a different entity altogether. I can't answer for BLM. I can, as a member of this council, answer for our city, to our citizens. So that's, those are some of the thoughts that I really struggle with. I don't care that it's Mr. Bloom, even though I do know him. Uh, my emotional, uh, involvement in this isn't necessarily about Mr. Bloom, but about how I feel, uh, justice, as it were, is carried out here.
Council member Smart?
Yeah, so I just want, I'll, I'll second what, um, Council member Stoker just said. I, sorry, Mr. Bloom, I, the fact that this has your name on it has no impact on my judgment here whatsoever. So let's make that very clear. And I think that's really important, that our citizens know that, and it is true, I swear to it. Findings of facts. So we have a, uh, road plan, uh, ordinance that, you know, dictates that development within what, a couple hundred feet of a previously developed, uh, section of road. We, we're not, we're not going to as easily waive that. The idea was to have contiguous or continuous roadway, not little sections paved out in the middle of nowhere. So that's what the city's stating, and I can't disagree, that's, that's true. I agree with Councilmember Stoker that, um, it does seem a bit unfair to have a resident pave, uh, both halves of a road that only one half is, uh, ever going to be reimbursed for. There's no latecomer fee or anything like that. And, uh, I think we do need to reconsider that for, uh, future actions. But those are the rules now. And so presumably, the finding of fact here is that, uh, paving this road, this two hundred and some odd feet, is going to benefit our community. It's going to improve our way of life here in West Richland. And, uh, numerous people will benefit from that extra two hundred feet of pavement as they go down Everett Street before they hit the dirt portion, which goes on for another, you know, three quarters of a mile. Those are the facts that I can see that we're presenting to council from the city's standpoint. We have an option to waive that requirement because of other findings of fact that Mr. Bloom has presented to us, both in letter in, uh, last, last week and in hard copy here, and I'll just point some of those out. As well as the neighbors who have all spoken, uh, in favor of maintaining this road, it's just a dirt road. I think that's hugely important, that is a finding of fact. Our neighbors, our neighbors, our residents of this city who are most impacted by this action are saying, no, don't pave this road. Not only because of concerns of water, but because they don't want the atmosphere of their frontage changed. They don't want people in the future speeding up and down these, this road. They like it being gravel. And I can testify that having a gravel road does slow most people down. And it does make it safer for children to play in the front yards of these houses. Versus a speedway, which, you know, these roads are not laid out like most developments. These roads are square and straight, long and flat. And, um, some of those in our community with lesser judgment like to speed down them. So keeping it gravel helps mitigate that. That is a finding of fact. It's an obvious fact. It's actually been stated here before council tonight by citizens who are most impacted. Mr. Bloom writes that the cost would be disproportionate to the current need or probable future uses. I couldn't agree more. Paving this road is going to cost a fortune, don't know the current cost. But I know it's not going to get used, uh, and enjoyed like a section of Van Gisem might. I mean, it's a little stub pointing into section six, which most of the residents don't want high density populations traversing anyway. So I don't see the need, there's, that's a finding of fact, that, that the cost is disproportionate to the need or probable future use. Mr. Bloom points out another finding of fact. He says where there are significant adverse impacts. Mr. Bloom points out another finding of fact. He says where there are significant adverse impacts on neighboring land uses, including impacts from right of way acquisition. I think I would. My my thought on that is the description is that, again, we have neighbors who are not asking for road pavement and our property. So so what's going to happen? So Mr. Bloom paves this 200 feet and then, say, one of his neighbors decides to build a a 400 square foot shed in the backyard that exceeds the whatever the minimum is these days. And and we have to. Are we gonna are we gonna not wait their section of 333 feet of frontage because Mr. Bloom has paved his 200 feet? Is it going to go on and on like this until all of section six has paved roads? That's not the intent of the neighbors up there. I guarantee you, I've been up there. There I I when I was young and foolish, made the mistake of paving my frontage and got complaints from neighbors. Matter of fact, we lost friendships over that. People came to me and said, you've got to be kidding me. What are you trying to do? Turn this into a suburban area? And I I kid you not, there's there's some folks that never talked to me again after I paved that section. So but we had five neighbors who all wanted that paved. Okay, it wasn't against the grain of the wishes of the neighbors, the immediate neighbors. And so we paved it here. I see something different. I see the immediate neighbors saying no. So I think those are all sufficient findings of fact in my mind to maintain the 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 valuable and desired atmosphere that those residents in section six enjoy of not having paved streets, not having streetlights, not being required to have sidewalks, et cetera. So those are my that's my comment, and I hope you acknowledge those as as valuable findings of fact, because I believe they are.
And before I go to Councilmember Moran, maybe I can ask Jessica to define finding a fact where is what what is is it an individual's opinion? Or is it a third party study? Can you can you help me with finding a fact being that you're an attorney and you deal with finding a fact all the time?
Well, I think a finding of fact is, I guess it's both. That's a lawyerly answer, but it is something it's an opinion of someone. The the risk is if a decision were to be challenged and the record is reviewed and there is not sufficient evidence to support that finding. So yeah, I guess that's the best answer I can give is that, you know, certainly people's opinions may be credible to some other people. But, you know, the balance is are there facts in the record that support what the findings are?
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. One thing that I've heard a little bit here that is a little concerning is the assumption of how people feel. I will state that I live in section six. I like paved roads because I don't like my car having the bottom side dug in with rocks that are jutting out of the road because of the way that the road gets because of the gravel. So I would not say that all residents of section six, that might be a bit of a exaggeration. To be fair, thank you. And I will say that in this, in the discussion that we've had so far, I have yet to hear something that specifically says that we should veer away from the precedents that we have had and change up how we're doing this and approve a waiver next to directly next to a lot that has paved roads on it. And the question was, well, what happens if we'll just do one and then one and then one? Yes, that is exactly the idea. That is what we have to do because otherwise it will it will continue to progressively get worse as gravel roads. And we are a growing city. We can't continue to have gravel roads. Time is marching forward, and we have to continue. We have houses that are being built that need to have ways for fire trucks to get to them or mail to get to them where they are not going across bumpy gravel roads that could cause issues with their shocks like I have had issues with when I've had DoorDash where some people say, I I can't deliver you. I'm going to have to try and find another way to get there because my car won't make it. Because, you know, they got beater cars and they can't go on the gravel. I get that. I'm just really concerned that we're focusing on this as a way to preserve the small town feeling. But really, it's just keeping us on gravel roads and nothing to do with actual small town. The town is the people, not the roads. We are the small town, not the roads. So I feel like we should follow the rules that we have made for ourselves. And if we don't like them, we can't make opinions based off of choices we're going to make in the future. We have to make decisions on what we have currently as our code. We can change it later, but that's for later, unfortunately. That is just the reality of the way that our government works in general. Welcome to being a cog in the system, right? That's all I got.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, so and I'll just state out front that I'm certainly one for abiding by the rules. But as another thing, I do want to add more emphasis again to public comment. As Mr. Smart has pointed out, there have been all the people in the neighborhood there, the immediate area seem to have stated they don't want it. And we are frequently told we don't listen. So, I mean, I'm struggling with it because people are saying they don't want it. They live right there. This is not somebody over a couple of blocks away in the same section six. This is immediate people. And it it just seems that public comment should mean something. And I mean, it did when it came to the police station. We wanted to put it somewhere else. There was enough of an uproar that we said, okay, we won't go there, even if some of the ideas some people would interpret as being inaccurate. But we we heated and left and went to where the police station is now. So I think we really do need to also consider the public input on this particular situation. Thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, I'd also like to point out that, like so many other waivers for frontage development, we've always had this clause that forces the property owner to abide by the majority of their neighbors if an LID comes up in the future to, you know, request the to request that the that the improvement gets made so that they basically waive their right to vote no. So I would point out that if this if 50% of this block of homes in the future decides they do want to make it easier on their suspensions, they they have the right to do that at any time. And and I would suggest that if we if we do consider changing this resolution, that it be that the that the that we waive the requirement to the frontage improvement with the condition that future LID pursuits similar to our previous decisions can't be voted against, or that basically Mr. Bloom loses his vote and is an automatic yes in the future. And that's how we've handled so many of them to date. And I would just point out also that let's not lose sight that this is a zone a zone change. There's a significant change in zoning between the neighbors and Colin Ridge's homes where they've got, you know, upwards of four or five homes in the size of a parcel that Mr. Bloom is going to be developing with a single home, maybe an ADU. I don't know. So there's a there's a delineation here, which is also an obvious finding of fact. So a finding of fact doesn't have to come from our department heads or our departments. We appreciate those for sure. But findings of facts can be observations that are plain and clear to anybody who looks. And I want to make sure that if somebody wants to argue with that, that would be important. But I wouldn't want you to bake this base this decision on some sort of pre misconception that we don't have findings of fact in all of the things I've pointed out already, public opinion, zoning difference, water, water issues, which may or may not be, but there it's a that is a fact. We've got photo evidence of serious groundwater problems. That's all I will say about it. I've made it clear. I don't know if that's something we can mitigate or not. And how long will it take? And how much damage would be done to a paved road between now and the time a solution actually comes for that? How long has that water problem been up there? I would ask, okay. And how many years will it take for that pavement to freeze in the wintertime when the water level gets up to within a couple inches of the surface before that asphalt starts falling off and cracking apart? So those are facts, and I have found them by simple observation and listening to testimony, and I think you have too. Thank you.
Right. So with that, Councilmember Moran, did you have something else you wanted to add before we're going to vote?
I would just say that I would gather that the knowledge of roads and geotech is more likely known better by staff than it would be by council members because the staff gets paid to know that stuff. But I will say that otherwise I have been listening to the public comment. I have I have not just completely disregarded, and I I hear it, and I understand what you're saying, and it frustrates me that we couldn't make that to me, we wouldn't be able to make a decision to waive it. But because of precedence and the code, my concern is that at this very moment, we would not be able to. That's just kind of where I'm at. And I would ask that it wouldn't be just so if all of Everett decided that they, or at least the majority of those that live on Everett, decided that they wanted to have an LID, even if it went just all the way from Pinnacle to, what is that, 56th? 54th? 54th? Would that be something that would likely cause it to be paved as well? It wouldn't just be only that block would be able to decide for themselves, correct?
Oscar, could you answer to that?
Yeah, whoever the majority of if all the residents along there, a majority of want them, they can petition to form an LID and bring that forward if they wanted to do those type of improvements.
They'd be responsible for their portion, and the city would be responsible for some financials as well.
In the past, the city's covered the BLM frontage.
Right, similar to on 58th when that happened. Right.
Okay, the motion on the table was for denial of the waiver.
Mayor?
Sir?
Let me just address a few more things, not to we've been here a long time, but I want to.
I didn't know that your card was just left up from the last.
Yeah, I know. So just to make sure, because Councilmember Smart's put a lot of things out there. I want to make sure that everybody's clear, have the facts here. And it's unfortunate it's Councilmember Bloom instead of some other resident, but nothing would have changed. It's put everybody in an awkward situation, and we've tried to be very transparent with this. There's not been gotchas that have been reported. But you do have a local roadway plan that was adopted by ordinance going through the SEPA process with not just public comments from five people. There was a ton of comments back in 2019. That roadway plan's been in effect since 1993, has been amended probably six or seven times. And it shows it as a public street. You know, that gritted system, you've got a transportation element of a comprehensive plan that talks with gritted streets. So while the neighbors on Everett may not want that street and the traffic, what you're doing by not building that is you're directing that traffic onto Collins and to Grant. So you're impacting the neighbors. It's not just about the four that don't want the traffic on theirs. You're pushing it somewhere else that's impacting somebody else. The reason behind that and why it's in your comp plan is a gritted system spreads out that so that the impact is mitigated rather than pushed to one road or another. And that's what you're doing. The majority of those roads out there have been paved. The only one that doesn't have the connection is that small section, 660 feet of 58th. And this thing that connects to the west on Everett, all the other streets have been put in except this one. You know, I get it. The neighbors don't want it, but we have plans. We have a complete streets ordinance. All those things are there, a transportation thing. Okay, so those are the facts that are in the deal. Just to be clear on this ordinance, you, you know, the ordinance is set up that I can administratively give Mr. Bloom an exemption to the requirements for the road because the improvements are there. It doesn't say that council cannot grant him one. All it's saying is we need to come up with findings of fact with it. And so the fact that the zoning change, Mr. Smart, the road section changes, you know, you don't do curb and gutter. You need to find, you know, the things, a lot of information wasn't provided. You know, there was talk about the elevated groundwater. That is a factor. And so you need to weigh that in your decision on whether or not you want to grant grant this. I wish we had other waivers that staff had done rather than the first time that this situation comes up, it's with a a council member, because it makes everybody, including staff, in an awkward position to try to be transparent with this and not look like like the city attorney, the parent fairness of fairness. It puts us all in an awkward thing. So but the the groundwater is real. And I can tell you, we looked at it. I can tell you as an engineer, we can build a road. Elevated groundwater is not unique to Everett Street. We don't have what that cost would be. But, you know, oil prices are not cheap. If I had to guess, and I'm just going to throw a number out there, I shouldn't because I don't have it in front of me, but I know what asphalt prices and I know this that that's probably a $70,000 bill for one single property owner that'll go out there. So if you feel that's a financial hardship to somebody build a single family home, maybe a future shop, then that's something to consider, and we can do findings of facts with that. If you're concerned about the elevated groundwater, then that could be a findings of fact because it is still an ongoing issue. We have better information in section one because we have deep we have a number of dry wells. Section six, we didn't have a lot of stormwater facilities, and that's why there's some of these monitoring wells, so we can try to get some data. But we still don't have data, and it changes lot to lot on what's going on. Somebody has no water, the next door neighbor's pumping out their basement. You heard from Mr. Lord? Talk about that. That's that's true. So there is some issues with that. So so there's a lot there, but it it puts us in awkward because we don't have precedence to go back. And and so as staff, I'm looking for that reason, even though I'm not the one to promote this. I'm looking for, you know, what is fair? What is in the best interest of the city? You know, in the best interest of the city, based on the plans we have, is is to start building these roads out there. But again, as a council, I don't get to make that decision. You'll have to decide if that's a financial burden that's over and above. And if or if you're still got concerns with groundwater, then those are all findings of facts that I can work with the city attorney to come back with a resolution to the next thing to make sure we don't have issues that somehow somebody in the public thinks that Mr. Bloom got some type of special treatment with with a thing and, you know, Mr. Bloom's been on council a long time and worked with him, you know. It's put me in a bad spot, and I've tried to be very front forward with this and putting stuff together. You know, with my vacation stuff, I didn't get the staff report out. I sent him advanced notice to kind of tell him, hey, I've got issues with this that I I don't have any ground to stand on personally so that he could prepare comments to to council and and speak to it. So I just want to know that we've got a lot of plans out there, but at the end of the day, you can you can basically approve the waiver, direct staff based on these findings that you feel the groundwater or you feel it the financial hardship for that. And the best way is like we've done in the past is making the property owner waive his right to a future LID for these improvements so they can be done collectively as a group and dedicate the road right. That's what we've done in the past. But then I would say we'd also want to look at our code in the future to make sure we're consistent with this. But it's unfortunate that this has come with a council member and not just a regular thing in the public. So it's put everybody in awkward position.
Councilmember Farrow?
$70,000? Is that like your neighborhood? I don't need to be like at the house. Is that in the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's it's going to be close.
That seems to me a hardship. That seems to me a hardship. As a mortgage lender. That house would never appraise. That would then require cash to put that thing in. Okay, that 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 gives me something to think about because that seems to me. I didn't realize it was that big of an expense. Honestly, maybe I I missed it. $70,000 to put in a wow. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's that's fully loaded. I mean, you're going to have to have somebody do geotech to go look at the groundwater. You're going to have pay an engineer, you're going to pay a surveyor to go do it. And then you're going to pay a contractor to build it plus their city fees for inspection and stuff. So it's it's a ballpark.
Councilmember Smart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roscoe, thanks for bringing this up. I I didn't emphasize, but I want to be on the record as saying that not only is it $70,000 or more. I would think because if you're working with ground where you dig six inches in and there's groundwater. You can't pave on top of water. But again, Roscoe's the expert. I I certainly agree with that, but I mean, it's doesn't take a civil engineer to know that you can't pave in mud. But nevertheless, the other thing about this is that there's no. If 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 this resident has to pay for this frontage improvement. There's no recourse, as we've heard in the future, for the other half of the road. To be that cost to be picked up by anybody. It's BLM land. They are never going to sell to anybody but the city. The city's not going to move in and generously pay Mr. Bloom for the half of the road that he paved just a year before. Whereas if if we do the waiver and the LA and and there's a future LID as Roscoe, Mr. Slade has indicated. The city would known this property presumably by that time, the property across the street. And would be responsible as a good neighbor for paying for half of the frontage improvement at that time. So you would have neighbors by default in agreement, at least a majority. And you would have a fair assessment on every property owner. Including Mr. Bloom for for future improvements to the road. And I I understand. You know, the idea of paving the streets, but I just don't see that this is a desired outcome in this case. We have a very specific set of special residents. They live in a section six, as I've been told by this city and countless develop city planners over the years. Is a really oddball spot for two and a half acre parcels. In the middle of what's now what's in the middle of town. As a matter of fact, when when we did some of those studies on on the deeds and the patents for these areas. If I'm not mistaken, they were pretty much unique in not only Washington state, but in most of the country. So it's super odd and people purposefully bought these properties. For that oddness, those that looked into it. So I just want to respect that, but I think that the cost is definitely a finding of fact of adverse impact to a resident and their desire to build.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, so I think I can once again emphasize and side with Mr. Feto and Mr. Smart on the cost of this being a, you know, I'd had no clue either. I figured it would be high, but 70,000 high is pretty darn high. But at the same time, let's do say that the city acquires the lot across the street. The city improves it. The city's going to put in a street. And Mr. Bloom then is going to have to turn around and well, what I would like to see is that we re we re consider this part of the code. Such that there should be recompense, such that if the city does acquire this lot across the road. And does make improvements and does put in the street. Mr. Bloom then has to put in his share as well. So either way, Mr. Bloom may be paying, but at least it's not the full amount and the city or whoever comes in across the street gets it for a lark. So that's where I stand.
What else? Councilmember Moran?
I'm so sorry. I do not mean to belabor this, but I was trying to think of how many BLM lots are on Everett, just looking at on. So two on Everett total, like on the other side? Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I was trying to look back at the other resolution and the street names aren't on the map there, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion and second on the table is in regards to deny the waiver. All in favor of denial of the waiver, say aye. And all opposed, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried as. No, the motion carries as in it does not carry what we will do is, thank you. We'll bring this back to council for with a resolution, the next council meeting. For consideration of a waiver as directed by council, not staff. Very good. All right, now if I can find my place on the agenda, we're going to go ahead and move on. Mr. Bloom, would you like to join us back up here?
Certainly, I'd like to make one comment. I had to raise a house four feet in order to not be in the groundwater.
No basement at that house. Swimming pool, yeah. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to items eight B and eight C are a public hearing and a resolution to amend the 2024, 2029 six-year transportation improvement package. Program, excuse me, Roscoe, you got details of your staff report, Stephen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we did a we did an amendment last year to the 23 tip to add the right of way into our Keen Road pathway phase four. But those right away plans, we didn't get the plans in, we looked at different options and we went after grants to get it funded. And so that didn't get obligated. And we did the amendment after we approved this 24 tip last May. And so now I can't obligate right away because it's not in the 24 tip, even though it was in the 23. So what you have is the exact same amendment that you did last June. Is amending that road project to add a road roadway phase so I can obligate federal funds for that. And again, it has to do with trying to build that pathway far enough out. So when we widen Keen Road, it's not a throwaway.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I'll open the public hearing up at 7:37. We'll hear in-person comments first and then go to virtual attendees. If you'd like to make public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one in the house. Virtually, if you'd like to make public comment. Please raise your virtual hand or star nine by cell phone to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
One with their hand up, no.
That'll close the public hearing at 7:38. Resolution 3224. Amending the 2024, 2029 six-year transportation improvement program. Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I moved to pass resolution 32 dash 24, amending the city's 2024 through 2029 six-year transportation improvement program.
Second.
A motion and a second, counsel. Any questions that weren't previously answered in the staff report? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Now we're going to go ahead and move on to item 8D as a resolution calling for an advisory vote regarding cannabis topic. And with that, I'll ask our attorney, city attorney Jessica Fultz to present staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2012, the state of Washington in I502 established a system to regulate license and tax the retail sale of marijuana, which is now called cannabis. Cities can choose to allow the retail sale of cannabis or not by state licensed businesses through local land use regulations. The retail sale of cannabis has not historically been and is not currently a permitted use under the zoning code in the city of West Richland. In November of 2022, the city received an application to allow cannabis retail sales within the city. After staff and planning commission review, the text amendment was presented to the city council in November of 2023. To allow cannabis retail sales only in light industrial zoning districts within the city. After public comment was received at several meetings, leading up to the meeting at which the vote was scheduled. A motion was made to table the vote until after receiving the results of an advisory vote of the citizens on the question of whether to allow retail sale of cannabis in the city. This resolution asks the county auditor to place the advisory vote on the August 6, 2024 ballot. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the agenda item this evening. We'll start with in-person comments and then move to virtual comments. So if you'd like to address counsel or speak to this agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I see no one in the audience this evening and we'll go virtually. If you'd like to make comment to this agenda item, please raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. And I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone virtually, but I did want to inquire, I believe, Mr. Cole, the letter that you wanted to read was in regard to this agenda item?
Mr. Cole, if you would like to make comments to this agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Not forcing you by any means, but.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I I ask is the city did receive a written comment, but it's my understanding that that is the letter that Mr. Cole is reading, so.
I intended to just wait till the other public comments section. Dave Cole, 1710 Ironwood Avenue, and I have the wrong sheet of paper. Stand by.
We'll hold the three-minute clock for you.
Again, this letter is being read on behalf of Dean and Cindy Rents, Rob and Christina Palmer. It's dated April the 14th this year. We're providing these comments in regards to item 8D on the April 16th, 2024 agenda. These should be added to the official record as testimony provided. The language included on the draft resolution regarding the ballot measure statement is misleading. It gives the impression that the city doesn't currently have any regulation when it, in fact, it does. The moratorium is regulation. If city if council truly wants to know citizens' positions on the in the issue, then you need to be more transparent on what's being voted for or against. The first statement is so vague by adding in the term regulation. The city has very little regulatory authority and in fact, removing the moratorium currently in place reduces local authority and hands it over to the state. To be accurate, this option should be read, remove existing moratorium prohibiting recreational cannabis sales within the city of West Richland. The second option should be more clear stating, continue existing moratorium prohibiting recreational cannabis sales within the city of West Richland. Further, the sixth whereas clause is misleading by simply saying public comment was received. In truth, there was significant negative public comments and minimal favorable comments provided at multiple hearings on this issue. City staff continues to try and downplay and minimize the consistent feedback that community members have provided. Which continues to undermine government transparency. When people take the time to come out on a consistent basis and are met with barriers, even going so far as being labeled by Mr. Mendenhall with disparaging terms like nimbyrs and ageism in an email dated eight, 1824. As well as conversation the mayor was involved in during the planning commission meeting labeling citizens as these people are living in a fantasy world. And should go back to 1950s. The fact is that the citizens that came out were from various age groups and regardless, their statements should not be marginalized due to their age or any other factor for that matter. This further erodes the community's trust in this local government and discourages participation. This type of treatment of your citizens is unprofessional and sends the message that public comment is a relative is irrelevant because certain leaders within the council have already made up their minds regardless of public testimony. We would further remind you that many of us have lived here for 20 plus years. And have been an integral part in growing and funding the community to where it is today. Respectfully submitted Dean and Cindy Rents, Rob and Christina Palmer.
And so we'll move on back to the virtials. Anybody virtually star nine or raise your virtual hand, make comment? And again, seeing none, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone with their hand up, no.
Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve resolution 33 dash 24, calling for an advisory vote on the issue of whether to allow retail cannabis sales in West Richland.
Second.
Motion and a second, and any clarifying questions you may have of Jessica and Jessica could maybe answer to comments made. Councilmember Bloom?
Yes, relative to the what was just read. It appears is the final, I mean. In the past, when we have put things on the ballot, there's negotiation on the words as it goes along. By please advise, you know. Is the the, since the wording for the advisory ballot proposition is in the resolution, does that sort of create a conflict because it will evolve over the over the period of time?
So the deadline for us to submit this resolution to get it on the August ballot is, I believe, May 5th?
August.
May 3rd.
August ballot.
Put it on the August ballot.
Which is for November?
No, for the August ballot.
Oh, the primary ballot.
So this, if this resolution is approved, this is the language that will go in the packet. Or in the ballot, excuse me.
Well, then, well, but we could revise it right now. I mean, this is the first time we have, you know, had a chance to discuss it and I think it is is what was what was spoken was correct. I mean, I I have no problem with the first option of allow regulatory cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland. But I do not like the second version, which says do not allow retail sales. Because people could be confused with the nearby cannabis store. And I I do like what was suggested of maintain the current moratorium on cannabis sales in the city of West Richland. It it seems more direct.
Let let me have Jessica explain the reason for her terminology and language. Maybe that'll be a little bit more clarifying.
So the the comments that there is an existed existing moratorium is not correct. So and I understand the meaning there. We do have a provision that states that cannabis retail sales or marijuana retail sales are not an allowed use under the city code. A moratorium is a temporary land use tool essentially to pause any applications for certain types of zoning or development in order to figure out regulations. So we did have a moratorium in 2013. It expired in 2014. So we do not have an existing moratorium. So I guess that is why I worded it this way and did not include the term moratorium.
Thank you. Councilmember Stoker?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually, I'm I'm the opposite. I like the second option better than I like the first option. Personally, I I I find that many people kind of only have a portion in their mind or they understand regulation halfway. They, so to me, it's easy for someone and an individual to read these two statements to almost say the same thing. So personally, I would rather that they more closely aligned by removing regulation of so that there's a clear delineation between allow and do not allow. And that way, regulation doesn't confuse the voter into thinking that like the Second Amendment, which many people confuse to mean that it's controlled. It's, I I just don't like regulation here, especially with my experience in talking to people about the Second Amendment of our US Constitution.
Councilmember Feto?
I was going to say, we want this to be as least.
I was gonna say, we want this to be as least leading of questions. And to me, it's it's pretty even. However, Ken, I I I I definitely understand what you just, when you said it out loud, that triggered me that right, that word regulation. I I I think I like that. Removing that word, allow retail cannabis sales within the city, do not allow retail sales cannabis within the city. I think I like that better. But I think these need to be as bland and as as non-leading as possible so that there's no. If it's the, it's the incumbent rule, right? People will vote for the incumbent because they're incumbent. If we say. Continue to not allow, right? Then people are gonna go, well, I'll just do that. I I think these need to be as bland as possible, as easy to read and understand as possible. And just simply allow cannabis sales, do not allow cannabis sales, so we can get the best voice of the city.
And then Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, I think I think we may have successfully confused uh at least uh three or four of our council members to to state. I'm not sure that was how this was written at all. If you read the text on the page, previous page. You start at section two, it says ballot proposition. The proposition to be submitted to the electorate shall read substantially as follows. Quote, proposition one, advisory only, city of West Richland cannabis regulations. Quote, please advise the city council, non-binding. Of your preference for recreational cannabis activities in the city. Parentheses, select one of the following. End parentheses, period. Box number one. Allow regulation of cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland. Which to me means. Allow sales, but they will be regulated sales, which is, I agree, an unnecessary word to put in that. You could just say allow the cannabis retail seller sales. Or citizen, please select between that one and the next box, which is do not allow cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland. This text is not asking us council members which of these two boxes we want to put on the ballot.
Both of them.
They're both on the ballot. Okay, and and so we were not selecting between one or the other. The citizens will select between one or the other. Okay, good. We're all on the same page then.
What page were you on?
I. It sounded to me like I heard comments that were favoring one over the other. So if you go back.
Yeah, the word.
But that's not what it was. Okay, good. Okay, so we're good. So I just think that that I do agree that we should get rid of the word regulation. Um, so it's very clear. We are either allowing cannabis retail sale, say, sales within the city of West Richland. Or we do not allow cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland. I I'm good with that.
But let me ask a question of Eric, if I could, please, it or maybe even Jessica. Is the word regulated because we are going to have. A scope of what is allowed and not allowed and where maybe the zone, regulated zone? Is that, does that fall into that category?
Well, the current, I mean, the vote is not. To amend the text to allow cannabis retail sales. It's to allow cannabis resale sales in light industrial zones. So we felt that it was a more accurate question as to what the vote was going to be on. Um, I'm not sure if it is required to be in there, but that was what we discussed about including it.
So that's what the word regula- regulatory means.
Correct.
Regular, okay.
But but that that implies to a lot of first readers here that um. That that is regulating. That this, if you check this box, if you breeze through this, if you're the average person who's in a hurry to fill out their ballot. They're gonna go, let's see, should we regulate cannabis? Retail sales um. I and and they're gonna say, yeah, we want cannabis to be to be regulated, right? In other words, that's a no vote. That's a, that's a, that's an opinion. No, I don't want cannabis in West Richland. They might not even get to number two, which says do not allow cannabis sales, right? Because it's the first one. Can be easily construed to say that um. That that would be the the down vote on cannabis that we would regulate it. So I. I understand what you're saying. I also don't think it's necessarily relevant. Uh, which zone we are uh in future conversation going to approve or disapprove these in because the zones can change every year, as we all well know. Based on this council or future council's decision. So I know it's an important point, but in a sense, in the large view, it's irrelevant. So.
You'd like to see that.
Just get the regulation out. We're good.
David, same thing? The word regulations?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff, regulation. Okay, Jessica, you're you're good with that. Eric's good with that. Let's listen to what Kate Moran, Councilmember Moran has.
Two seconds. One.
Thousand one.
I don't, I'm not going to approve this anyway, because I think it's a waste of money and I think we should have. Uh. The wherewithal and the facts in front of us to vote no tonight if we wanted to. So. That's my my final say on that, but I want it to be right if it does go forward.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate that. Councilmember Moran?
Um, uh, yeah, because it's. I I'm, one thing that I have concern with is. If it doesn't have that regulation of in there, I'm concerned that it'll look like. And I know this isn't the case, but that we'll just be able to have willy nilly retail sale within the city without any rules whatsoever on it. Um, if we were wanting to split hairs and make it more specific, we might want to say something like. Allow cannabis resale, retail sales within the city of West Richland. Per West Richland municipal code. And then at the end of the second one. No, what I mean. If there's some way to, because we can't regulate it if it's not in our code, right? Is that accurate statement?
What's currently not in our code?
Right, but we would have to change the code, correct? That's what this would be saying. The advice is going to be if it's to change it or not.
Member Farrow said, make it as simple. It's yes or no, and. Planning will make sure that whoever that applicant is, is regulated according to what the zoning is. Correct? Okay, very good.
Just to make sure the the zoning is in the code, right?
Will be.
Right, but so it would be changing the code. With this.
Text amendment, it is already designated that if that is the case.
Right, I just. I'm always up for semantics, just.
Councilmember Bloom?
Uh, I guess I I I will. Question whether we we can simplify the first part of this even more. Please advise the city council. Rather than of your preference of recreational, we'll just please advise city council, non-binding of. Uh. Not preference of for recreational cannabis sales, just drop the of your preference. Right? I mean, please advise for recreational cannabis activities in the city, select one of the following.
Jessica, from what you've heard, can you uh, can you give us an explanation of what you feel that these five, six people are are looking for this evening?
I.
Simple, simple is better. That's what we want.
Correct.
Yes or no?
That's correct.
That's what we were trying to get at to begin with, counsel. Don't, you know.
Right.
We don't, yeah, we don't want it. We don't want it. We don't want to be influencing one way or another to the advisory vote. Yes, no?
He's already said advisory, proposition one advisory.
Yeah.
But wouldn't everyone recognize that a vote is a preference?
Stephanie?
Um, yeah, I I just wanted to add that the language, the original um ballot language, so that first section was actually pulled from a couple of other cities that have previously run. This type of of advisory vote. Um, and so that's where that language, it's been previously used um by other cities for their votes.
Bloom, do you have another comment?
Well, I'm I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Okay, perfect. Councilman Farrow?
Are there too many cities under proposition one? City of West Richland City? But only West Richland residents would see this one. No, but the wording says city of West Richland City cannabis regulations. Under proposition one advisory only. Are there too many words city in that?
I think I think city was meant to be on the next line.
The city cannabis regulation. So it's city of West Richland. City cannabis regulation.
I don't think you, I don't think you need this second city.
Agreed.
Now we're splitting hairs.
Wait, wait, wait. Isn't that a show?
Okay, so the only word that I see that we would ask to be removed would be regulation?
Regulation of.
Regulation of. And then the one city after the city of West Richland.
And I would ask so that somebody else doesn't get to it first. Should it say cannabis regulations or cannabis sales? Because we've taken regulations out of the first bullet.
Sales? Okay, Jessica says yes. I'm looking at the legal gal here.
Would we want it just to say read?
This is not an exact science, though. There's not a whole lot of guidance, so we're doing the best we can.
We're gonna remove one of the cities. We're gonna remove the uh. No.
Cannabis retail sales.
Cannabis retail sales. Okay, all right. Who made the, who who wants to revise their motion?
I'll make it. I would like to make a motion to amend the. Uh, resolution so that it states under section two. The wording would be proposition one advisory only, city of West Richland cannabis retail sales. And underneath that, the first option would say allow cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
So that's a.
Motion passes. For.
For the amendment.
That's for the amendment, right.
Through the resolution, yeah.
Now we go back to the.
Oh, I have to correct my.
Yeah.
Yes, I I'll say aye to the amendment, but I'm gonna say no to the motion. Oh, wow. Sorry, guys.
And as as the same that was said for the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign, please.
Aye.
Eric, thank you, counsel. Appreciate the wordsmith clarification. Yes or no is what we're looking for, right? Okay, moving on. We got item uh. Eight E is a motion regarding the appointment of the pro committee and the con committee members to prepare statements for the voters pamphlet. For the advisory vote. And then back to you, Jessica, for the staff report. Through all the papers, we've been shuffling back down there for getting wordsmiths, right? We probably got, there you go, found it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For each ballot member that uh ballot measure, excuse me, that will appear in the voters pamphlet, the RCW requires. The legislative body to formally appoint two committees, no later than the resolution filing deadline, a pro and a con committee for the issue. Um, each must consist of no more than three people to prepare arguments advocating for or against the measure's approval. Um, these committees, although they only consist formally of three ma- members, may seek the advice of others. Um, in this case, uh, the city staff has reached out to individuals and have. Found that the following individuals have indicated they are interested in participating in this process. For the pro committee, Walter Thomas Satis. Nancy Aldrich and Ken Weaver. And for the con committee, David Cole, Cindy Rents and Dan Ritchie. Um, if approved, this uh. Motion um would appoint these members to the pro and con committees and be approved by the auditor. Um. Under state law, if we do not assign members to these committees, um, that can be done by the auditor.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to speak to this agenda item? We'll start with in-house people first. If you'd like to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thirty seven oh six South Lake Drive in West Richland. Um, I just have a question for who the committee members are. Is there any. Requirement or question about um, do they need to be citizens of West Richland? Can they be on the outside? Can they have a vested interest in presenting their position on it from a financial basis? I just have a question about that.
And we don't normal answer questions, but I.
I understand.
They need to be a a a West Richland citizen and no other requirements as far as that goes. Pro or con, simple, simple.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? And we'll reach out to virtually. If there's anybody who'd like to speak to this agenda item, please raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone. No.
Thank you. Uh, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Walter Thomas Cetus, Nancy Aldrich and Ken Weaver to the pro committee. And David Cole, Cindy Rents and Dave, Dan Ritchie to the con committee.
Okay.
A motion and a second. And a dual card. Council questions? Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, so um with uh. Ms. Davies, if I recall correctly, forgive me if I didn't get your name right. Um. With her question, um, can we confirm that Mr. Weaver then is a citizen of West Richland? I was under the impression he was not, but. That that could be a wrong impression. I'm I'm not up to speed on that. The the second item that I had uh thought about was um last week, uh, Mr. Mendenhall. With Mr. Smart and I had had a brief conversation about conflicts of interest and. This may or may not be one, but Ms. Aldrich is on the planning commission, so she has some influence in the city and such. So I'm just curious as to whether or not. That can be perceived as a conflict of interest with her appointment there.
And I'll, before I go to Stephanie, I'm if I'm if I'm incorrect in the citizen aspect of it, I'd correct myself, but I believe he holds a license for the city of West Richland. And Stephanie or Jessica?
Um, it's so the county auditor um will verify the um status of anyone that's appointed for that. So. That's not the the burden of the city to to decide. It is the county that will verify based on their records because they hold the official voters um records.
And it's my understanding, in order to have a license in a city, you have to have some type of residency or property or something in that order, that that was a long time ago. So. We'll let the auditor's office figure that out. If he's DQ'd for not being a real McCoy individual here in nine nine three five three, we'll find another individual.
Because we're just appointing.
Yes.
He can still be denied.
I will say, um, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I don't see any requirement in the RCW that they have to be a um. Member of the city. I don't know if that's, there are auditors, local auditors rules that dictate certain requirements, so that may be one of those. Uh, but I did want to address the issue about a conflict of interest. Um, the ki- the committees may include agency elected officials or staff members. As long as they keep their campaign activities separate from their public duties and don't use public facilities to support or oppose the ballot measure.
We'll see what the auditor has to say then. Councilman Bloom, do you have your card up?
My question was was concerning the selection of these individuals. Um, how did the names come about? How were they enlisted or volunteers or whatever?
Eric, you want to respond to that?
Sure. After a council meeting, uh, I approached Mr. Ritchie, Mrs. Rents and um Mr. Cole, as well as a couple of other individuals that were. Have been attending the council meetings and have made comments against, therefore it made. Clear sense to to approach them and and Mr. Uh, and all of those individuals have typically continued to show up and continue to provide comments against, and so I reached out to them. Um, and then they talked amongst themselves and got back to me as far as who they wanted to have beyond that um committee. And effectively, the same occurred with those that are pro. It's individuals that have approached me. With positive feedback on the text amendment that I felt would be appropriate to have uh serve on the pro.
So so at that, at the time you were listing people, you weren't necessarily trying for citizens, correct?
No. No, that was news to me when I heard that tonight.
Okay. Um, I guess the, the question comes down to is, um, these are the primary names that would appear on the voters pamphlet. Correct? Should they be approved by? That doesn't mean, uh, can additional committee members be brought forward as, you know, by them? I mean, that's.
Absolutely. They're, they're kind of the chairs of the committee. There's others that could volunteer and help out with how it, how it's written. Um, but their names would be those that are attached to it.
Jessica, did you have any more comments?
Um, I was just going to clarify that, um, that there's not a whole lot of guidance, um, in the law about how we select these committees. Um, some cities have advertised, um, some cities similar to us, um, you know, obviously know people who are, have feelings both ways, so um, we kind of just did what we knew we had a short deadline, kind of did what we thought was easiest, knowing that they could reach out to other committee members or, um, other interested parties to help with the statements.
That, counsel, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And, uh, no unfinished business this evening and nor new, new business, so this is the second public comment opportunity, so if you'd like to address counsel, uh, please come to the podium and state your name and address for record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Nino Capatula, sixty-seven eighty-three Caspian Place. So, um, just an observation tonight that, um, the matter of cannabis was overly complicated and, uh, being carried into something that is quite unnecessary, it's gonna cost the taxpayers money, it's gonna really cost the time, um, of the council members and the citizens of this city. Also, um, I would like to, um, also address the fact that my husband, my husband and I were builders in this town, so we're very heavily involved in a building industry and know many developers, and, uh, since, um, this has been brought up, there has been communication about how it would affect the market. And, uh, for West Richland, we want to grow and it is primary, um, its primary goal is to be able to build homes, have families move in here. And, um, as of right now, it has not been positive feedback, and I just would like to go on the record to say that we will be reaching out to, uh, mayor, uh, with setting up a private meeting so we can further discuss what would something like that look like. Um, again, this is advisory, uh, vote, and I just want you to understand that you, as a city council members, are still responsible to make the right choice for the city and the effects that it will have on our, um, properties, on our move-ins and businesses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, oh, okay.
I turn my head around, back to the public. Richard Bloom, uh, fifty-nine hundred Everett, want to thank you for denying, or not denying, the waiver, but I'd like to qualif-, uh, uh, suggest two other issues. Uh, as I mentioned, I had to elevate my house four feet. Now, I'm from Louisiana, I'm used to draining the swamp and worrying about the alligators and snakes, but, uh, I have ten, my, my builder said I had ten loads of rock brought in to elevate it. The street is a good four feet below where my property is. It, the water flows over the street in December. There is no way you can build a street. Now, possibly I can mitigate the groundwater if Mr. Slade, uh, acquires Lot seventy-seven. I'll put in a, a dry well, which will be a wet well. And, you know, collect the water, which currently is happening in that monitoring well next to it. Uh, and then direct it across the street, under the, under the street. Hopefully that will mitigate some of the problems and not exasperate my other neighbors. But, um, the, the fact that, one of the findings of fact is, truthfully, as I mentioned, we, there is no place to send the runoff. We're trying to get Lot seventy-seven to send the runoff, but I cannot dispose of the runoff in the current right of way because of the groundwater. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dan Ritchie, five-oh-eight Austin Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, tonight I want to raise the issue of, uh, public comments. I heard tonight, half a dozen people get up here and provide public comment. I heard you folks give credit to those people for stepping up here and, and giving public comment. And, uh, you obviously listened to what it was that they had to say. Well, ninety-five percent of the people that are against these, this lifting of the moratorium that doesn't exist and the, the allowing of pot in the city of West Richland, ninety-five percent of them have stepped up to this podium and told you they don't want it in their town. Okay? And yet we go back to the survey and we say, oh, but the young people think they want it in this town. So the people that won't take the time to come in here and talk to us, you, me, won't take the time to talk to us, the people that we don't know the faces of, the names of, et cetera, all right? They carry more weight than me, the nimby, the naysayer, the go-back-to-the-fifties guy. Okay? And I take offense to that. I, I really take exception to that, because let's be clear about it, we voted you into office and I pay their wages. And so why is it now I warrant that disrespect? Why is it I don't get the benefit of letting my voice be heard in this city I live in? So, we got a problem here, folks, and I hope that you guys can do something about it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And Terry Davies, thirty-seven oh six South Lake Drive. Thanks, Ken, you got my name right. Um, I wanted to just say that, um, in regard to this issue, knowing that this is an advisory vote, so the council will be the ones who are making the decision, that, um, we do want to keep in the forefront that, um, there are alarms about bringing a business like cannabis retail into our community, into our city. And that, um, as council member Fettow, um, very eloquently said a couple of council meetings ago, he had warning signs that there was a problem with his health and that there were things that he needed to do and make changes. We have warning signs that having, uh, cannabis retail sales in our community is not going to be beneficial or cost beneficial. And we are having warning signs of people who are speaking out against that. I do want to just, um, note today in the Herald, in addition to the article about West Richland and this issue coming before the city and the community, that, um, there was also an article that, um, yesterday or early this morning, uh, that Pasco dispensary targeted in a smash-and-grab robbery in Pasco. I know that happens other places as well, but let's consider this to be another warning sign that we need to take care of the health of our community. Thank you.
What else this evening?
John Page, uh, four-six-one-four Snowy Al Court. I've lived in West Richland for, I don't know, twenty-six, twenty-seven years, raised my family here. Um, I feel that, um, I agree with council member Smart that the advisory vote is kind of a waste of money. You guys could have decided this. You could have said no, because it doesn't fit with the vision that we have for the city. Um, I raised my family here because this is a small-town community. Yes, we have gravel roads and that's all right. Um, but, uh, I feel that while this is legal in the state of Washington, I don't think it's beneficial for our community. We just had a person from, uh, the Tri-Cities, I don't know if it was Chamber of Commerce, uh, who gave a presentation tonight, and he talked about having additional businesses in, in West Richland, like hotels. And I don't feel that this business is going to attract the businesses that we would like to see in this community. And so I know this advisory vote is non-binding. I know that you guys can make a decision regardless of what we determine as citizens. Um, you know, somebody at, somebody that had a comment earlier brought up the word dictator, I'm not going to use that, but sometimes that's what we feel like we're up against here, because as some, as Dan just mentioned, we don't always feel like our voices are heard. And, uh, we are the ones that pay the taxes here. We are the ones that pay the salaries. And for the most part, we don't complain, but in this case, uh, we are speaking out, we'll continue to speak out, and I hope that you guys are listening. Thank you.
Nelson House? We're about running out of people.
Good evening. My name's, uh, Jennifer Page, four-six-one-four Snowy Al Court. Um, I would like to echo what Mr. Ritchie said about, uh, you all opened your ears and heard what the, uh, residents hear about the, the LID road situation. You listened to them and you heard them. That was four, five, half a dozen people. Um, and yet, again, for what, almost a year or more now, you've had people come and stand before you and over and over and over and over again say, we don't want a cannabis shop in our city. Over and over and over, we've said that. And so because this is a non-binding advisory vote that the city is moving towards taking, that isn't going to, um, obligate you one way or the other, I hope it would in the sense that you're not going to approve this tax amendment. Um, you know, the citizens could continue to say, we don't want this as evidenced by our vote, and you could still disregard that. And so I am here to tell you, we still don't want this in our city. And I hope that when the time comes in September, October, November, whenever it is, that that, uh, ballot is certified and you are then presented with the results, the official results, you make the right choice and say, we don't want this in our city. Thank you.
Health? We will now move to virtual land. If you'd like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Head, move on to staff council announcements, reports, and comments. Uh, any staff members have anything for us this evening? Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, just wanted to report out that, uh, as you're aware, we did receive all of the survey results in from last month. Uh, and we had a amazing response rate. Um, we did get over eleven-hundred surveys that were received, um, and provided some wonderful information for us to consider and to look forward to. Um, and I spent, there's quite a bit of, uh, feedback we received that people were able to just enter in and type in things that maybe not were covered under the survey, and they were able to just enter their information in there and provided great comments there too. So I would encourage you, it is live, it is on our city website, so if you want to go out and check it all out, just like you did last year, it's all there, it's available to you to look through, to read and get the feedback and information from our community. So I would encourage you to do that. Also, I want to just to celebrate the opening of Tumbleweeds last week. They, well, they've been open for a minute, but, uh, they, they had their ribbon cutting last week, last Friday, which was a great event. Um, it was a great celebration for their, uh, new business here in our city, and I just wanted to give them a shout out, so.
Thank you, Eric. Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to report on, uh, Roscoe, on my behalf, uh, we have completed the irrigation rate model. Um, it came back so that we don't have to adjust rates, uh, currently. Uh, we'll continue to monitor it. Uh, we shared, uh, information with the, via email with the utility committee. Um, but other than that, that's about all I have reports, so you won't see it. Um, but we will not be raising rates, uh, in the near future, but we will continue to monitor it.
Christmas cards will be in the mail, right? Counsel, any comments, reports for you? Council member Smart?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank the, the citizens who spoke tonight and all of the various issues. Two thumbs up on that, for sure. Um, I wanted to, uh, mention to staff that although sometimes, you know, our decisions may change or not agree with your initial assessments, that in no way should reflect that you don't do a fantastic job, and we appreciate your professionalism and, and all of the, um, so contrary to some of the comments we heard tonight, I'd want to counter that and say that I, I have the greatest respect for the professionalism and the, um, and the knowledge base sitting over there, uh, in those seats. So, s- thank you, and, uh, although we might disagree sometimes, your, your input's incredibly valuable, so please take that to heart. Um, I wanted to mention, as far as the city survey goes, Eric, you mentioned, uh, like eleven-hundred-plus, um, respondents, and there was a lot of feedback. I had a citizen come to me who, who took the time to go and cer- look, read all the feedback. I have to admit, I haven't yet. I, I intend to as soon as I get a minute or an hour.
Or two or three.
Or two or three. So my, my, the, my, my recon team tells me there was something on the order of fifty to sixty uh, comments on, that were, I guess, just comments at various places throughout the survey, and that over forty-seven of them were, uh, specifically came out and stated they were people who were against, uh, having a cannabis or pot shop in the, in, in West Richland. So I look forward to reading that myself, and if, if you happen to know those numbers, I think we would all be interested in that as a, as a cer- as a, as a hot topic, right? Like, how many people said no, and how many people wrote comments that said, hey, I can hardly wait for a cannabis store? Um, so, uh, yeah, those were my, my two comments. Uh, counsel, I appreciate all the discussion tonight. I think we did what councils are supposed to do, so thank you.
Council member Bloom?
Uh, yes, um, as of April first, uh, Ben Franklin Transit no longer has a general manager. Unfortunately, due to, um, personal issues, her father is seriously ill, and he's having to go back to, um, for treatment in Salt Lake City, and so she chose to move back to Idaho where she'd be closer to be able to deal with him. Um, and, uh, we are in search of a new general manager, so it's out there. Um, the Transit had a meeting last week and, um, Commissioner Didier again tried to address, uh, reducing the sales tax on Transit uh, from point six cents to point four, five cents, which equates to about twenty dollars a person per year. Or no, a family per year, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I don't believe that, I mean, and he wanted us to put it on the ballot again, and you talk about diminishing returns of a ballot issue. Um, Transit is viable, it's still viable. Um, but unfortunately, there is a, the twenty-one seventeen issue will be on the ballot coming up. Uh, twenty-one seventeen will rescind the carbon offset tax. That'll save you forty-three cents a gallon on your gas, which equates to, what, nine dollars when you fill up a tank? Um, it also, if you're on natural gas, it'll cut it by about four percent. Um, we expect, Transit is expecting that that will pass, which means we'll have, take a hit of about four and a half, five and a half million dollars a year in reduced support from the state. Uh, it, it was, that was a reason, uh, that one of the caveats of getting that money was the kids for ride free. Uh, I do not expect that we will rescind the kids' ride free. We, we, the previous general manager had. We, the previous general manager had worked hard at cutting costs and controlling growth costs, and I believe we can absorb it. So the Kids Ride Free will probably survive budget cuts coming up because I certainly expect, or I certainly personally hope, twenty-one-seventeen passes. Because I know where the money goes, and that's not a good way to take your money. So it was designed to discourage you from driving, and I don't believe it worked. Anyway, just those are the things going on. We will probably transition. We may lose the one-ten bus, but the good news is you won't lose Transit Service because we're going to expand the Via service, which means if you get the Connect app, they'll come get you. So, and take you to the new Transit Center, which will be opening shortly at Queens Gate. And we're going to rearrange some of the services so you have a little bit more direct route because the intent of Transit is to get you places in a reasonable time. And oh, by the way, if you depend on dial-a-ride and you can't schedule your dial-a-ride, you can actually have Via. They have vehicles which can take a wheelchair. And you don't need to schedule it a day in advance. It'll take you maybe fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Has she already left town? Has she gone?
Yes.
Okay. She was a remarkable lady. I was really excited to have her when she came onboard. She did a lot of good things for Transit, so I totally miss her.
She took a hell of a beating.
Yeah, but she straightened it up, for sure. Thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I will just say that I apologize for not being at our last meeting. I was unfortunately out of town due to a death in my biological family. But I am going to be watching over the recordings, and I appreciate the fact that we have those recordings available to watch because I want to catch up on all of it. There is a BF COG meeting this Friday. I believe that I am going to be chairing that because our president or chair, whatever we called the head of that group, is going to be unavailable for that meeting. So it's going to be fun.
Councilmember Moran. And Councilmember Smart, thank you for the comments you made in regards to staff and what they do. They are very professional. They're spot on as far as following code, rules, regulations, so on and so forth. And my job is to try to make sure that we watch out for potential liabilities in cities, hence the conversations that I had with Jessica. And then again, too, nothing personal against this gentleman sitting to my right, who is John Q. Bloom Public. But it is one of the obligations that we have as elected officials by our people and staff members to make sure that we follow the rules and regulations. And if, Counsel, you make the decisions to change them, hopefully you don't put us in a liability situation where we end up spending more money. So I'm just doing my job.
Yep, I understand and appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we do not have an executive session this evening, so I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at, my phone's even dead, it's been so long, eight-thirty-four.